Join DPW Subcommittee Town Council Meeting Wednesday, October 11th, 2023. At 6:00 PM, but we are starting here at 6:20 in the Benner's Room. The agenda item, agenda item number one, call order two, roll call, Council Daniel.
Present.
Council Shenier.
Present.
Um, Council, uh, scissors member Lazo is excused, yeah, excused, and Mr. Cody.
Present.
Right, we have, we have a form. And please make sure if you need to sign in, sign in, please. Number three, consider and accept Department or DPW Subcommittee minutes for August 16th, 2023. I do have a hard copy if anybody needs them, but I did send them to you a couple of days ago. Or maybe even yesterday or second day. Sir.
Hard copy?
Need a hard copy? All right, here's August 16th. I will have to make some amendments to it. Sir. Give you a second, read it or you guys good? All right, there'll be, I'll have to amend some of it. I'll amend the, uh, the very end, Mr. Cody, so you know. All right, any other discussion? Calls in favor? Pose, four zero, here's for, uh, September 18th. Sir. Need a motion, a second?
I'm moving. Second.
Yes, sir.
No.
Any discussion, calls in favor? Four zero. Thank you. For a full review, discuss transfer request from count 001, 499, Tac 530000, specialized services, amount of $1,180.12 to account 00141499, Tac 527000, rentals for the DPW to rent a scissors lift and for the town manager to sign all related paperwork and I do a motion to recommend for approval at Town Council.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yep.
Uh, thank you, uh, this is a request, uh, recently, well, we've been working on the, uh, community center with the DPW, uh, we had been given notice of some, uh, issues down there for doors and like to have them repaired and, um, as I think I stated in a previous meeting, we've been working with the school department and, uh, helping assist us in some of the repairs, uh, and when we went down there to, when we went down there to review the, uh, the items, uh, one of the items was a bucket on the floor that was capturing a heating unit that was leaking. When we observed that leaking unit, Mark from the, uh, school department facilities, um, took note of, one of them was completely not working, the other one potentially was not working, and one, uh, part of the blower, the pancake blower, I believe they call it, was, uh, totally disconnected. So, uh, here we are in October and we potentially had no heat for, um, the gym area of the community center, which also serves as our, uh, emergency shelter. So, uh, Mark, uh, stated that he was gonna be able to, uh, work on those through the school department. However, they would have needed scissors lift to be able to reach up to that area. Um, they also had some CO2 monitors that they needed to replace at the school. Um, so the thought process was, let's, uh, combine that, rent it for the period of time so that they could compare, they could, uh, do the repairs in the community center as well as change out the CO2 monitors in the school district. So we're taking on the cost on our end because, uh, they are providing the labor, uh, to assist us.
Questions, discussion? Sir.
Why are we just finding out now, this late in the year, that about heaters that are?
Uh, well, potentially, I just received the notice from the inspections Department of the issues when we met to review what was going on. That's when we took note of, uh, of one that was leaking that potentially was working, but the other ones had other issues, so that's why we're getting repaired.
Yeah, I understand about why it's so late, I mean, isn't there somebody down there could have told us this in the middle of summer, beginning of summer or something, or at the end of last year?
Well, I think, uh, given the fact that we're short-staffed on numerous front fronts and new staff down in the community centers such as Katie who just took over, um, we are making sure it was brought to our attention and we're immediately taking care of it. So, uh, that's the way, uh, we're gonna find a lot of things throughout town. As I, you know, I'm on week seven, uh, Rich has been busy, uh, and with, uh, other staff that were taking note of this stuff and we're just fixing it, uh, as we go along.
I'll just make note, uh, caveat for the town manager. That area over there hadn't been looked at for quite some time and, and now that Katie's in there and you got Rich and, and the town manager taking a look and especially it's, the place has been highlighted quite a bit by the Town Council and a few other members, um, we're probably gonna, like, the town manager said, we're gonna probably find multiple things that need to be repaired.
We voted, we voted in to try to start straightening things up in this town.
So, any other discussion? Council Marquette?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I thought we had a scissors lift for some reason, thought I saw one upstairs.
Oh, that's not a, so that's not considered a working lift, it's basically for like changing light bulbs, servicing air filters and stuff.
All right.
This is something that we will, we will eventually be purchasing one of these machines. Um, it is portable, uh, variable height lift that you can actually do work by going on.
And how long will this rent be for?
It's a one-month rental, it was fifteen hundred, just on, just shy of fifteen hundred dollars, I think, for the month. So we're utilizing money that was in the rental account already, but we have to offset the additional that we didn't have remaining for funds.
Do you think you'll be able to get this done in a month?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Any other discussion?
Can I just, yes, can I just share good news also? Tomorrow, we're going with an energy expediter to the building to walk it to see if there's other obvious weatherization projects that we can potentially consider, um, using National Grid incentives.
Any other discussion? Calls in favor? Pose, four zero. Five, review discuss authorize contract with Time Bond for fiscal year 2024 stormwater engineering services in the amount of $122,500 and to have the town manager sign all related, uh, documents.
I move.
Well, we will, thank you, Mr. Town Manager.
Uh, thank you, through you. Um, as you're aware, the MS4 reporting requirements that the federal government has put in on us require us to do certain tasks. Um, the Town Council had allocated monies towards these, uh, programs. Um, Time Bond provided a quote for them to continue the work and I'll let Rich explain anything else that is needed.
So at the moment, we've selected Time Bond to handle a lot of our assistance to bring us up to par with our MS4 compliance issues with the EPA and the federal government. Uh, they just completed our year five, uh, annual report after, uh, most recently completing our year four annual report that I believe we were like nine months late on because we just, the staffing issues that we saw. So, uh, they were, uh, when, uh, Mr. Blanchard was still here as our town manager, um, had put together a, um, uh, had requested from Time Bond to put together a schedule, um, of what our annual requirements were going to be in the coming years. I, I believe it was discussed in meetings back in June. They had put together a, a plan out to year 10 for our compliance and overall costs and that was one of the reasons why, uh, the manager at that time had requested funds from pre-cash at the end of last FY. Um, so we do have the funding on hand as we're, uh, something that was, uh, in play. This is just, uh, this year's portion of that, uh, contract.
Discussion? Go with, uh, Council Marquette first?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. So stormwater is an unfunded mandate, has there been any effort to try and get the state to chip in on some of this?
So we did just, uh, complete a application for a grant that, um, I believe if we are selected for it will assist us with some of the costs for next year. Um, but our overall costs as of right now for the next five years is just shy of $500,000 to, to do this and that the, uh, that might increase because some of the regulations are changing. Um, there's some issues with, uh, some stuff with Long Island Sound that has migrated up to us because we're contributor of waters that get there, so we might see some additionals.
Okay. And be careful with Time Bond, I hope that you provide really good oversight with them because they are really good at change orders, we get a lot of change orders from Time Bond, we get a lot of change orders on South Street, and I think that, uh, the town manager can also let you know about all the change orders we've got on the fire station from Time Bond. So you really should keep a really close eye on Time Bond and Time Bond.
Thank you. Uh, Council Shenier?
This money's already been allocated?
Yes. It's in an account already. There's actually two accounts, one that has 172.5, I believe, and the other one had 250,000.
Sit. Council Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Um, are we in compliance with the feds?
At the moment, yes.
At the moment, we are?
Yes.
Great. And your Long Island Sound is where our waterways dump into and issues that they're having down there will have an effect on us up here. Okay.
So just, uh, basically long-term compliance for our stormwater systems and what, you know, what ends up going into the river. Um, so there's, there's additional testings and, and so on that are being discussed for water sampling for outfalls and wet weather, dry weather, um, different, uh, areas around industrial sites and stuff that could, um, potentially, um, put something into the, the stormwater system. So these are all things that, essentially at the moment, it's only coming down on us. If it gets too stringent at one, at some point in time, we might need to review the town as overall and see if we need to be, you know, charging for inspections and stuff for, you know, entities within the town, but at the moment, we're not there yet.
Any other discussion? Calls in favor? Pose, four zero. Six, review discuss entering the agreement with Energy Conservation or ECI and the National Grid for two, level two charging stations with four chargers totally to be, total to be installed at the registry of motor vehicles by January 2024 for $49,668.63, of which $7,248.63 will be paid by the town using Town Council Reserve Funds, account number 001132, Tac 578100, and to have the town manager sign all related paperwork.
I move.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, through you. This is a great opportunity that, uh, Peg has been working with, with the ECI, which is our consultant.
They were previously our energy expediter for green communities. Uh, we don't have to stay with them, uh, but we, Eric started this project years ago with him and we're just trying to follow through on any, um, unfinished projects.
I'll go with, uh, Council Lazo first, I got you.
I remember we talked about, in front of the library, we were supposed to put some chargers, we were gonna do, uh, behind the Edward Building and the registry was in the little page. There was quite a few of them, uh, Main Street thing through and that just eliminated those parking spots where you can't charge a car, so they said maybe in the back. What happened to that, those projects?
Mr. Dean?
Yeah, I was asked to give an update, Council Marquette, I apologize, I know you'd ask me to give an update on the chargers. I still haven't gotten to the bottom of all, the, each, each site had a different issue that they couldn't go forward on, and I know the long-term plan for the libraries that they, that, I think the parking lot eventually needs to be redone. They, they did include a survey in their, they had a survey for another reason, so they, they surveyed their lot. It would be something that you could do in conjunction at the time of maybe redoing that parking lot, but I don't think it's anything, um, that's imminent right now. I, I, I will definitely continue to do my research. Once we are with another energy expediter, I think we're moving away from, from ECI after this project.
Council Shenier?
These other, other charging stations, aren't they grant-funded? Like the library, I remember them going, I remember being out in the audience and understanding that they were gonna install them into the parking lot of the library and there's no foreseeable future of a parking lot being paved at the library. So, I mean, and then they put them here at Town Hall. So, uh, on top of what Council Lazo had, I mean, if we, we keep getting these grants for these charging stations and we're not putting them in, or, uh, and then my next question would be is, uh, do we pay the electricity on this? Who pays the bill for the electricity in there?
So that was all explained, that's a good question, but I'll let Ms. Dean go, no.
Yeah, so you can, uh, establish whatever charge you want at the, uh, at the station and so what the town should do, and we will, I've already, we've already talked to the DPW about, they will be in control of the, the station and how much gets charged. You can change depending on the time of day or what you think is fair to be able to pay the town back. Um, with regards to the other chargers, so there was an issue with each one of the potential charging stations, according to Eric, and that's the homework that I need to do to figure out what were the issues that were holding up, taking advantage of the incentives that were out there. Um, and some of the incentives have changed, we never got any grants, we would have potentially been applying. I don't know that we ever actually applied for them, um, so that's part of my homework. And for instance, like this one ends up, in, in the last year, there have been new programs that have been created. So this is a new one where we don't have to go through green communities, or, you know, we go straight, straight through National Grid instead of what was called the EVIP program. Um, but again, I have to get through more of the details.
So if somebody plugs it in, they're paying for it?
It's, it, yes, and it's still a great price compared to buying gas. So, but, you know, yeah.
I just think they have oil, it won't be on us, it'd be on the user. Uh, Mr. Spleen?
Mr. Chairman, through you, I agree with Council Shenier as far as it doesn't look like the library parking lot's gonna get paid too soon and Ms. Dean said that they were holding off. If I understood you, pardon that because of the parking lot, what's gonna get paid or something? But my, my biggest thing I wanna bring up is with, with thinking about putting them at the registry at $7,300. Don't we have that big construction project in the future going on down there? Is that gonna affect these chargers or are they being put in a spot where they're not gonna have to be dug up and moved again at another few?
Then let me, uh, I'll go to the town manager first and then Ms. Dean.
Yeah, uh, Ms. Dean and I have spoken about that and she's worked very closely with the, uh, plans for that area, so that's being incorporated in, I'll let her articulate that. And we have also already spoken to the RMV, uh, lease individuals about moving their parking space so that we can accommodate them and they're fine with that. So, you know, if she has any other details, but we have, we have worked and taken all that into consideration to make sure that whatever decisions we're making down there isn't something that's gonna be affected, uh, by construction. And she can elaborate because I believe we can put them in and then they'll pay when we move them, uh, as part of the project. So that's already been discussed.
Ms. Dean, thank you, Mr. Town Manager.
Yeah, more to the, the library point, I'm happy to bring forward and, and whatever the town wants to move the chargers for the library forward tomorrow if we would like. I need to first get the details to find out what is holding it up in the first place. Besides the parking spots in the front, I don't think that was the only issue. And then I, my, my planning brain thinks if you have other capital projects, you try to couple them, but if that's not a priority for the town, by all means, I don't wanna mislead in any way. And, uh, what, uh, count what the town manager said is absolutely correct. So we can just remove and reinstall as long as it's part of the TIP specs and we check the BIS TIP designer.
Thank you. You go first. Uh, Council Marquette?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Um, my, I just wanna make it clear. Somebody is paying for the electricity, is the town going to get the money for the electricity bill or is some other company going to get the money for charging their owners?
Ms. Dean?
That would be a good one, correct? No, the town could be getting the money for the charger, it's our charger. So one of the very last details that I have asked the, um, the energy expediter is, please verify that if we were to sell this property at any time in the future, what the, whether we can with the chargers. What's, you know, or do we have to remove the chargers in case? Just to know all options, not to say that that property is ever to be able to be resold, but I wanna know all scenarios.
Okay, thank you, um, you said that would be a good one, but when I read the entire paperwork here, it didn't say anything about who was going to get the money, so this is why I ask questions like this. Uh, the other thing is, if we are just going to move them anyway, first of all, we're not gonna have to pay to have somebody put them back, it's all gonna be part of the TIP project? But why would we install them, remove them and put them back? Why would, it's not like electric cars are coming into town tomorrow, I mean, maybe we should just wait until after the TIP project, is that a thought at all or?
I'll defer to Ms. Dean.
Oh, we asked those exact questions, so we felt the same thing and we were advised by the TIP project people to just go ahead and do it. They don't wanna stall it, we were advised by the National Grid people, go ahead and do it. They're not sure if they'll have these same incentives next year.
But it will be paid for, we're not gonna have to pay extra for somebody to reinstall, right?
And, Mr. Town Manager?
Uh, through you. Um, this would be a good one if you could get it through the Opera to reimburse the County Council Reserve. We put this as a funding source because rather than say stabilization or anything like that, we figured we would at least do the Council Reserve, uh, but this, if, if at all possible, if Opera would consider, um, that because we are dipping into County Council Reserve so that we could get these projects going as we try to fine-tune where our finances are on the other hand.
Done, easy. We'll get it on the agenda form. Thank you. I haven't set it up yet. Everything was on pause. Any other questions, discussions? Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, coming to that, then it's down here, the additional funding details. Why don't, is that something more we might get that we could, you know, we could say, pay back at seven or back on this page here?
So about the 7, $7,200?
Yeah, but over here, it says additional, additional funding details after everything else. It's another $23,700.
So.
Ms. Dean?
Yeah. I wanna make sure, on what page are you?
Uh, it looks like a supplement or something, it's in statute of National Grid on top. There's no page number on it.
No. It's pretty developed.
Okay, multicolored grid?
Yes.
Yeah, so I have a question about this to the National Grid provider. That is, had we gone through the EVIP program, which we're not? So the additional funding would have been the EVIP program and then our incentive would have not been the 4,200 or the, it would have been the less the, the 2,300 is how I understood it.
So you just threw that in there to confuse us?
He's, unfortunately, I was resurrecting old documents and bringing them forward, but he verified that these numbers, that we're going forward with our correct.
No, Mr. Coop?
I'm all set.
Any other discussion? So I, I will say, I, I talked to Eric about this because nothing was moving on these, um, these, um, charging stations. There was ones, one of the ones that we wanted to move was the town halls. I don't know if Council Lazo brought that up at the town hall, moving the back. So the guy that works at Harrington Hospital does charges his freaking car all day long on our dime, uh, on the tax pair dime.
He doesn't pay for that?
No.
Well, he should be paying for that.
Well, that's why we wanted to move it in the back, so it'd be utilized for our ve, our government vehicles or I should say government vehicle only, or whatever it may be, probably right out front and then whatever the police need to do, whatever happens to happen. But that being said, as far as, when I talked to Eric, there are, if, even if it goes on, it goes on town pro, or public property itself, it'll be just like any other charging station. You have your card, your debit, your credit, whatever it may be, your app, and they should be charged right there in the spot, they should pay for it right on the spot before it even kicks in. So that's something that we should be paying attention to when it actually comes up.
So, right, so then maybe the one here, we could add that to it and the town could have a card?
A gas card?
Like a gas card for that.
Oh, on this one? I don't know what the requirements were when they put that in, we'd have to research what the requirements were when we...
But I'm sure it's pretty old over there.
Or even aside saying town vehicles only, either it's gonna be.
This one's, yeah, this one's been here at least seven years, I would say.
Because sometimes the whole weekend is a car plugged in there.
I don't mean to go off the agenda, but, you know, we talked about the Common, there's a couple going at the Common, the library, the Main Street, uh, parking lot across the way by the, the fire station.
The fire station, the new fire station.
Yeah, so.
It's gonna have five, required by code.
Okay, so.
So.
And there are, there are electric vehicles that actually drive through our roads, I, I have seen them.
However, the one at the fire station, the one at the fire station will be the same thing where you have to pay.
You have to pay for it and all that kind of stuff. I'm here to labor, any other questions? Calls in favor? Pose, four zero, thank you. Number seven, review discuss, sir.
How do we bring something up like that, the charger over here, that something needs to be done about that?
Um, well, I just, I hope, you know, that, that talking to the town manager and, you know, maybe, I don't know how much DPW would have involved with that, but the police would assign, but we'd have to look at the contract.
The contract.
Cause the contract will dictate what we can put up there or not.
There were so many requirements, I remember when we were on council that.
There may have been an agreement that we're, it was gonna be open to the public as well, for public use. And there's a guy over at Harrington that literally parks there every day, plugs it. I think he's a night worker and he plugs it right there, so.
Well, if that's the case, we need, we need to take it out.
Well, I don't know what the contract stated, I think that would be something that we had to research along with all the 20 other electric vehicle charging areas.
Plus we have a town vehicle that has the, uses the charger, so.
But there's two chargers.
So, anything else you're good with that?
Well, I guess I gotta go before the Town Council and tell them, you know, they need to.
But no.
He's aware, we just gotta look into it.
Yeah. Now something we can do is bring up in the next, one of the next DPW meetings and, and kinda just discuss it too.
May I?
Yes.
Yeah, that's just part, it's part of all the research I need to do into Eric's outstanding projects that haven't gone anywhere. He definitely did a lot of homework on it years ago and then it just stalled, so we'll have to resurrect it, that's all.
Very well. Yeah, there's a lot of, uh, catching up to do, I'd say. So, thank you, but good questions on it. All right. Numbers, where are we on, seven?
Take a vote?
Oh, yeah, we already did the vote. Number seven, review discuss applying for shared streets and spaces for $250,000 to fund the pedestrian and safety improvements for the East Main Street project scope not already funded by the Mass Works and to have the town manager sign all related paperwork.
So move.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Um, this project came as part of, uh, Rich and Peg working together to bring this East Main Street project to fruition and seek whatever funds that we can. So this would be an additional, the shared streets and spaces area. Uh, let Rich give you what the area is gonna be, but this would be tied in with like the rail trail and, and the continuation of that project and what we're doing in our office and in communication with Rich is, uh, building out projects, um, within, uh, our departments to say that we have an East Main Street project and talking to what grants we have for all the levels of funding and then working to, uh, uncover what funds were already committed through water because there's a water project within that, uh, so that we, when we go out to bid, hopefully in the spring, we have a, a great sense of, uh, a complete project that's not, as Rich calls it, orphan projects, I believe you called it?
Orphaned streets.
Orphaned streets, where it's just segmented, that we only do parts and parts, that it's a complete project and we can move on to the next section of the town. So I'll let Rich, uh, talk about the specific areas that we're talking about.
So I think this, this, this is something that came up in discussion about my, my sidewalk change, correct?
Yes.
So we had the discussion about removing the sidewalk to the opposite side of the road from K Street down, how we were going to connect that with the rail trail. Um, the fact that the asphalt walk that is there now is where the rail trail is going to cross Woodstock Road. So you would have ass, have that new intersection that's there with that asphalt walk that could lead to a concrete sidewalk. So then it was, you know, the, the conversation turned to, well, if we're gonna have a 10-foot wide shared use path coming across the intersection, it should tie into the sidewalks, that should be concrete, should have, you know, it should all blend together and not be a mixed match of, uh, different processes. So we're, the intentions of this is to try to, uh, source other resources to cover the additional costs of the project so that we can complete it as a whole and not just do it in pieces.
Discussion? Council Shenier?
So this, this is gonna be done on the non-river side? So with the sidewalks, that was done because of Council's concern about crossing over East Main Street and crossing back at the Rotary. So this is all of that non-river side of the road, correct, no?
That non-river side that you're talking about was, is gonna be from, uh, K Street to the Rotary.
Right.
So we're talking about from K Street now to, to the North Woodstock Road.
Oh, okay.
Keeping all pedestrian traffic on that side of the road, so they're not up against the ledge and the fence of the AO.
Right.
We'll have to make some changes on that side of the road for, for safety, but it'll be a much better layout to have pedestrian traffic on the opposite side.
Anything else to add to that?
Yes, if I may, just the way that I worded the motion was to ensure that if it, if not, we can use the, the shared streets for not just that section, but anything, including that shared street if we have the funds, which I don't know that will stretch that far, but that way it allows us to.
Any other discussion on this? So I just wanna thank you guys for doing that because eight, four years ago, five years ago, there was a, a meeting where we talked about complete streets, um, and, and shared streets and DPW didn't want it, town manager didn't want it, um, economic development didn't want it and we used it. And, and the thing is, now that we have you guys on board, it, it, things are happening with it and it's extra money in our pocket to do the actual infrastructure. And and the thing is, now that we have you guys on board, it, it, things are happening with it and it's extra money in our pocket to do actual infrastructure work. So thank you and look forward to more projects with that. That's, yes, sir.
So uh will the discussion come up of like we were talking about outside of guardrails or sidewalk on the riverside come up or is that, how's that?
That's already been part of the discussion as for the design for the road, what we have to do for that, that portion. Because we're, the discussion at the moment is, is we're abandoning that section of sidewalk, so that will all come out. There'll be, you know, either new curb or or, you know, replace, reset what is there. Um, and then, you know, we might have to add guardrail around that curve to protect traffic from going over there back, but we're still in the process of doing that planning.
Okay, like, and the question I have is, who's gonna see these plans, approve these plans? You know, like, I've coming on here late, you know, years later after we went like the figure eight rotary going by where Combs used to be and stuff and, you know, all this ridiculous stuff that's been put through without anybody knowing what, you know, turning onto Mossy Street with, you know, a regular guy hits a car and they mind a truck. I mean, so.
So that'll, so that'll fall under me. So I wasn't here for the planning portions of those projects. There are still some things that we are adjusting with those, those other projects that we're still able to adjust. Um fortunately, as far as this project is concerned, we, the, I think I walked into the, the plans that we had like a twenty-five percent plan and now we're, we're building.
We have ninety percent plans by January when we were hired.
Okay.
Yeah.
So now we're, we're, we're still able, we have the time right now to make adjustments and extend those plans. That's what, that's what all this conversation is. Cause a lot of this, that project was fairly laid out, but we're, we're still in that infancy stage. We're not ready, we're not quite going out to bid, so there's time to change those things. And we're also looking at some of the other projects as well to see if there are things that need, that should be changed based on, you know, what I feel the outcome is going to be for the town.
Now, will we see any of this stuff before it gets voted in or it can be, you know, basically the last word on things or, I don't know how things normally work?
Uh traditionally, we put, you know, DPW or with the help of, you know, planning and development or whatever, we'll put the, put together the, the projects and they will essentially go out to bid. I mean, we don't typically have uh public hearings on them, I don't believe.
Uh, none of those, we don't.
Okay, I just. I'm just trying to figure out, like I was talking with Scott, you know, maybe I need to get on something else, cause you know, like to see, you know, I've done the construction all my life, so you know, I, I might have picked up like on Mossy Street or this other stuff that's, you know, doesn't make any sense.
So what you can go about doing that, and it's a good question that you bring up on how the public get involved and you can always contact, like, we have plans for the central street area and stuff like that. They're all downstairs and they're visible by anybody to take a look at.
The section eight, I mean, the figure eight rotary type of stuff.
So it's all, you know, um I think that's even changed, but uh, you know, there, there, there is a ability for the public to, to take a look at some of this stuff. They can just request it. It doesn't always come right away, but it, they do have the right to take a look at some of this stuff.
Yeah, well, you know, when you see, you see, everybody sees it when it's already been approved and it's a done deal.
Right.
What I will say is if we have the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar and we end up getting approved for the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar, it does have to come back to the town council for approval to accept that grant. And in a lot of take cases, the town council, those that are sitting in public, will ask more questions like you're asking. Where's this happening? When they originally started doing the East Main Street, that was one of the things where the old DPW director was talking about, well, we're gonna, we're gonna um decrease the width of the size of the road deal, slow everything down.
Right.
We all disagreed with that and we talked about railing over there because we've had drunks and other individuals who had health issues. Gone right in the drink. So um, you know, that was brought to our attention as soon as they started uh planning this. We were, we were looking at those designs and making our own recommendations, but um, you know, I'm glad to see that this has happened.
Just like West Street, that, there's gonna be some problems with the buses and stuff. And I can see making things, but doing the road like sturdage it so people can swerve off or stuff. You got the curve there now with the ten-foot sidewalk. We're gonna have some problems with that, I guarantee.
Well, what we can do is I can have conversations with Ms. Dean and uh.
I mean, it's too late now for it.
Well, I'll have to take a look at some of this stuff and I mean, it's not that we're gonna, they're gonna make changes to it. It's one of those things that, that's why we hire these individuals for it and make some. But they, they changed the sidewalk, listen to the town council. It's on the opposite side of the river now. Um because I know Council Marquetti, I believe Council Shanier, quite a few individuals said, hey, that's too dangerous for pedestrians going from one side of the street to the other side of the street, back to the other side of the street and then across the other street. And then they said, well, this is what this, this whole thing is now about, because they heard our voice and and uh made some changes, so.
Yeah, I'm still in disagreement form on that, but.
All right, runs that. Any other discussion? All's a favor. Pose? Adams, Paul present, thank you. Number eight, uh review discussed Department of Public Works staffing status, recruitment and recommendation to create a position for an interim executive operations officer or an MS six, or for an MS sixteen. Entertained motion, the town council recommend approval for position pending approval of General Gov.
So moved.
Second.
Very well. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, as you can see, we also have a general government subcommittee meeting afterwards that will talk about also the adoption of the um job description. So um originally, when we had this meeting with Rich and the chairs, the town council chair and the subcommittee chair, we thought about having just a special town council meeting to talk about DPW operations and how we could uh work on some things in the interim uh as we try to build the department. But then other items came on for General Gov and it just, it wouldn't be right to say, hey, I wanna do this as a special town council man to have, talk about these issues when we're gonna have, and and not go to subcommittee. So we kind of tried to work and navigate this as best we can, so both subcommittees have input in it to the position. So it's a little convoluted, but uh we're working on it. So when I came aboard uh seven weeks ago, uh Rich and I have had conversations over uh the department and I think any town council that's sitting here today that had been on council or attended meetings over the last year um had seen a lot of discussion about the DPW operations, specifically the deputy director of, of uh that department. Um, Rich uh and Human Resources have been actively trying to recruit, um, let me just move over here, so I'm not, have my back to the councils that are here. Have tried to actively recruit um a deputy director. We had a candidate that was gonna come for an interview, however. Upon his community um learning that he was interviewing with us, gave him a substantial raise, a car and additional vacations. We have nobody in the pipeline for deputy director and reviewing some of the records in the office, I found that the prior deputy director, Dejada, deputy director attended his resignation on September twenty-first of two thousand twenty-two. So there's been no deputy director in that department for over a year. Um, there's a tremendous amount of work, as you can see, the MS four reporting, there's other reports that are required by the federal government, uh OSHA and Division of Standards and all those, that Rich needs an individual to assist him so that he can plan out all these projects so that we can go into an active bidding season. So we had to think outside the box about what could we do in the interim to look at the department and assist Rich to be able to concentrate on those higher level things while giving him an executive level assistant, not the deputy director, until we can figure out what this department may wanna look like. We've had conversations also based on the studies that took place with the, uh that we've all talked about, the merge of the school facilities, the DPW. Should we explore that? How would that model look? What are we gonna do with that? Um, specifically also the deputy director's position about whether or not and uh Rich to readily look at the hiring of an engineer within the DPW. And how um, would that make sense? Because if we're on council, we know how much we spent on engineers through the different consultants that we had that probably would have paid for um that position for a couple of years, based on those two projects that we did. So this position, when we worked with Rich, has worked very closely with NOR and Human Resources to uh look at what are the, some of the duties that we would be able to give to this interim person to be able to work on a daily basis until we can really firm up a plan uh for this department in the long term. And how we wanna build and how Rich wants to build his team and the way that the department should look like in the future. Plus, he's extremely short-staffed with the fact that we have been able, not only deputy director, the assistant mechanic had an interview scheduled yesterday, the person no-showed. We have a candidate tonight that's gonna be forward to be a maintenanceman, equipment operator, one that's being promoted and he's sitting here today, listening to all of us, who will have to backfill his position, so that will still leave three maintenancemen, equipment operators. So Rich will also have to be out on the road, probably during storms, to assist his department. Um, so uh we have the job description uh provided and the level of steps was when we evaluated it, NOR was the previous executive secretary to the town manager and based on the requirements of what we thought the job would entail, what we believed within the MS schedule would put this individual. Uh, so we are recommending the creation of this position on an interim basis to assist Rich in the day-to-day operations, which would also help take some load off of Tara, who's her secretary on some of the thing that she's working on that has been also uh busy. So it's a very busy department and uh that's what we're looking at, so.
All right, thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Discussion. Mr. Spine?
Intro, do we have a, a timeframe set, six months, a year, two years indefinite? How is that position gonna be done?
I'm gonna say we're gonna go at least uh six months to the end of this fiscal year and see what we're gonna do when we get to budgets to be able to uh retool that engineer's position and how that would fit in with salaries and whether we have to make other adjustments within engineer and DPW director. And also, if we really wanna take a look at that study, um, cause I reviewed it and I know councillors have reviewed that study. There's a lot of recommendations. If you do move that over to DPW, there's a whole staffing change as well that would require an admin uh to oversee that, so. Um, it's gonna take us some time to get there, but this will give us some time to really build a great department. And if Rich has anything else to say, I'll defer to him.
He's there, nothing else to say. That's about it.
Just a quick question, come on the guy, don't forget history. History was getting an engineer was the problem. Um, I'm not disagreeing with what Rich is saying or the town manager, uh to try and give it another good old college try. But the thing was, when we first went out there to fill it, the minute Matt left, it's not like they didn't make an effort, but it ended up stalling, couldn't find an engineer. Then they're telling us it's like thirty-four needle in a haystack to find an engineer. So that's why it, it kind of evolved into something else. And again, here we are, we're evolving a little bit on a, on a temporary basis, which I am fully in favor of. And I think that uh Kivat Baman had the ability to restructure and take another bite out, try to take another bite at the uh, at the engineering uh position. If we could fill it, then, then so be it. But right now, I think what we're doing here tonight is to benefit that department a hundred percent.
Any other discussion? I do have one. Um, and I should have paid attention to this. I know you've got a General Gov.
Yeah.
But and I know the General Gov chair is here and I got the town council chair and the town manager and seven other councillors that are sitting in here right now. Would it be, why would we bring this to General Gov? Is it because of the schedule? Well, I'm just saying, what I'm not trying to take away is from General Gov, what I'm saying is we're, we're, you're asking them to discuss at General Gov the same thing we're discussing here. And we have seven councillors here, including citizens members, who, you know, have, have received the brief from you.
No, I, I understand. I was trying to navigate this and again, I was short-staffed on this meeting. We're trying to figure out how to, how to make this work so that both subcommittees, because I didn't wanna put this in DPW for the adoption of, of the classification schedule and the, because the classification schedule wouldn't come to you, it would go to Gen Gov. So it really was, hey, you know, you guys review it, I wanna confirm and we have an individual that we're gonna put forward. So it's, it's, it's your opportunity to look at this job description and then move forward with their adoption as well, so.
Very well.
It's a, I guess I, maybe I was overthinking process. I know that Gen Gov usually takes job classifications and, and that. So I was trying to defer to those subcommittees to make sure that everybody had a say.
And it's not a sign on anybody. I think what it was is there's a brand-new position that we're creating and we're trying to figure out and I, as you reminded us, you've been here seven weeks, so I think that's a really good, the amount of work that has been accomplished in those seven weeks and then including this with Rich and trying to get somebody to get the work done and as, as Council Lozal stated, you know, find an engineer. I mean, there's towns hurting for DPW directors right now and on top of that, uh the deputies. I mean, how many did you go through already that walked away the same day they were supposed to be voted on?
Yeah.
Um, so uh I, I go with the, sorry, Council Mont, take me in then, Council Lozal.
Thank you. Um, yeah, as the chair of general government, I have no problems with the way that it's uh structured here, you know, cause at least when it comes to the subcommittee, the meeting postings and stuff, it, the open meeting law, we're fully disclosing to the public. Um, and there's from both sides. I guess what you could have done is, at the end of the DPW meeting, you could have had a one-item joint meeting and then adjourn that and have a general government, but this works too, and it is what I'm saying. And I have no problem with it and I think, I don't think anybody should really have a problem with the way it's, it's done.
So my recommendation, Mike, would, it is up to you really, because you're the chair, but I, I, you know, maybe just do the scheduling uh for a vote at the General Gov, because that's who it always goes to in the first place, instead of going through it again.
It's entirely up to you and.
It's up to you though, it really will be.
I mean, we, the way it's, the, the way it is, it's pending approval of Gen Gov. If Gen Gov decides that they say, hey, it was already approved and DPW, we don't have to take any action, you can do that as well.
Yeah, just didn't wanna discuss it three times at a time.
I did, I just wanted to end those comments by saying I do plan to run the General Gov meeting the way it's written, so if you guys feel like you need to do something, it's on you.
Well, there's nothing we can do. I just wondered if we could give some recommendations.
You know, we're all reacting to this. I think, I think what we really know is that DPW needs to create it. We have to understand what the money has to be at DPW, what's the value of DPW position. It's all on the DPW director and the town manager at that point. Uh, and I do understand, but because of the structure of how we do our subcommittees, and again, we constantly debate that as far as, you know, full council or, I think that it's gonna go in front of the full council anyways. Um, if, if General Gov is good with it.
I'm fine, absolutely fine with everything.
It's more important that we find the right creation of the position, the person to help Rich get the job done, but uh I think that's the biggest part of it.
Very well.
The, the General Gov is a clerical thing.
Got it. Any, any other discussion? All right, all's a favor. Pose? Adams? Thank you. All right, here's the hard part. Just kidding. All right, number nine, review discuss the town manager's appointment of Benjamin Doros as maintenanceman, heavy equipment operator for the Department of Public Works as recommended by, recommended by the DPW director. So move. Need a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you. Um, you certainly have the Benjamin's uh application uh here. I'll let Ri- uh Rich defer, but Benjamin has been a valued employee of the Department of Public Works and uh Rich has evaluated and, and it's been uh hard to recruit people, so we're fortunate that we have a, and we won't talk age, but we will, a, a young man that works in the Department of Public Works, that's eager to grow with us and uh continue to work for us. Um, and I recommend his appointment. I'll defer to Rich for any other comments.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager.
So in our department, Mr. Doros is a very well-respected younger staff member. Uh, our current senior staff are willing to share their experience with him and take them, take him under their wing to uh leave behind some of their knowledge. And I think that that is an ultimate value for the town and the department because of his relationship with them. So I think that this is a, he, he makes a valiant candidate to uh move forward the, the, um, the position will be an interim position for six months with a review of six months uh between myself and a Human Resources and the town manager. And if everything goes as we've discussed and according to plan, he'll get the position permanently in six months.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Any other discussion? Uh, Council Lozal?
Uh, Ben Doros, you wanna make a speech in front of the council?
I was gonna ask you that, but I'm gonna ask you to stand up and you. I was gonna ask you that, but now we're gonna ask you to stand up and you have dance a little bit.
I gave you time to prepare.
And you sort of wrote a letter out or something. There it goes. All right.
Go ahead, next candidate will make a speech. Go ahead.
Anything, Ben?
At all? Thank you, guys.
Okay. I just want to say, hopefully congratulations on Monday. Brothers, and thanks for being part of the DPW and the restructuring of the whole thing. It's going pretty good over there. So I thank Rich, uh Mr. Brenoid as well. The only thing I do have is if the HR or the town manager, we can get the entire um application form. There's only three of the four pages on here. So if we can get that, just uh appreciate that for the town council. That, that's all I've got. Any, any other discussion? All is a favor? Posed? Adams fall present? We'll see you on Monday night, Ben.
Thank you.
All right. Number ten, review discuss the town manager's appointment of Jeffrey Joseph Tebow. Am I saying that right? I am from the West Coast and this East Coast stuff is weird. All right, maintenance man, equipment operator for the Department of Public Works as recommended by the DPW director.
So I will add to that.
Just need a motion, please.
So move.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Town Manager?
Uh yeah, I'll defer to Rich on this, but uh this individual uh was recommended by uh Rich. He did the interviews and set it up through uh HR and to the town manager. So I'll let him talk about the interviews.
So this individual was a very straightforward interview. Um he, we actually offered him the position some weeks ago. Um and he, at the time, had to respectfully decline because of some issues at home, uh health issues with a family member. Um did not want to take on the role and then have to tell us that he needed to take time off to square stuff away. Situation was a lot less uh drastic than originally thought. So I had offered the opportunity for him to reach back out if something changed and it did. Uh everything is squared away and he is ready to come on board. So we're, we're ready to have him.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion? He's not out here, is he? I was gonna ask, didn't realize he was in the Marine Corps from ninety-four, ninety-eight. Interesting. Wonder where he went to. Uh, did he go to Paris Island, you know? Yeah, you, you, I need to talk to this young man.
Hired from the Navy.
This is what I hear all the time. I'm not worried about any of y'all. I was a drone instructor down there. Another Marine being hired on. Check that, that stuff out. All right. All, any other discussion? All is a favor? Posed? Adams fall present?
You can pull a muscle when you raise your hand like that, dude.
Yeah, freaking, just, we're on, we're on tape.
Are you ready for the Marines?
Yeah. Here we go. All right, come on. Let's move this along. Number eleven, review discuss the town manager's appointment of Hannah Prescott as interim executive operations officer for the Department of Public Works as recommended by the DPW director.
So move.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you. Um so as we discussed about the position itself, we know, many of us uh know uh Hannah from her previous role as the executive assistant to the town manager. She had decided to take a step away from that position, um but has always communicated that if there was any positions within the town that she would like to be considered. And then when I talked to Rich and we talked about this position and be given the fact that it's an interim position, uh we go out and actively recruit people for interim positions, um Hannah's skill set would be very valuable to be the assistant to Rich when it comes to, one, she has completed all three courses for the uh chief procurement officer. So while she is not um have the official designation certification, she does have the designation as a uh procurement officer, I believe is what she said, or uh but she's completed all courses. So she's very familiar with the procurement. She has done that within the town manager's office before. So she's, she's very knowledgeable in munis and had worked to build the budgets um in the absence of the previous uh or when the town manager left and the new interim town manager came on. And I know when she has worked with me on the fire station building committee, when I was chairman of that committee, she was very detail-oriented and assisted with the bid processes, making sure that documents were secured, uh actively going out for that information. So when we look at this job description of MS four record reviews, reporting requirements to federal government, um building bids with Rich for the uh road projects that are gonna hopefully go out in the spring, um it just gives her a natural fit for this interim position and I highly recommend her for this position.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager.
I got what he said.
Got it. Uh Counsel Mar- uh Montague.
Thank you very much. Um I have some questions about this. I, I, I intend, I, I'm going to be supporting this position and I, and I want to support this person and um the, my, you know, it's what your conscience, my heart wants to vote, yes. And I just, my gut has a couple of questions on behalf of the taxpayer. Probably can really only be summed up into one question. Um you mentioned that they stepped away as we got the resignation letter back in July. All other things aside, why do you feel that that will not pose a problem in the future and will instead be a part of the solution to the, to fixing the problems at DPW? That's my only question.
Thank you. I, I believe that's a fair question. It really is. And I'm not gonna get into the personalities that took place up in that office before I got here. I can only talk as a citizen, observing it as new town manager coming in and the team that we want to build. I would have preferred that she may have stayed, but it was her decision to step away to take some time to reflect on what the ongoing of that office were and the overall environment. And I respect her for that. However, I believe her skill set, her desire to work with us, her desire to work with Rich in that department outweighs the concern that she would step away again. She wants to be here. She wants to be part of a team. Um and, and I respect the decision that she had to make a tough decision to step away for a period of time, but she wants to stay committed to the town and wants to, to be part of this team. And uh we'll give it a shot because I believe that her experience and her abilities will greatly assist Rich in that department.
I, I really do appreciate that answer. Um I think that's sufficient enough for me to support it. And I will say, on a professional level, uh when it comes to being a, a efficient and effective uh businesswoman, she most certainly is capable of doing this job absolutely navigating through the waters, in my opinion. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Uh let Mr. Brenoid and then um then Counsel Lazo.
So ju- just briefly, before, obviously, there's been a lot of change over the last, you know, five, six months here. Before Hannah left the town, I had the opportunity to pull her aside, have an in-private conversation, just say, hey, you know, what's going on? You know, what's, what's, and I understood the situations, how things were playing out, the stress of being upstairs and doing what she did there. Um she did lead on to me that there was some other personal issues that were going on at home that were uh quite significant at the time, um which also led to her having to step away. Um so I have remained in contact with her since her departure from, you know, her position and um, you know, was hopeful that I could at least get her to come back to town because I felt that she was a very strong person for the town. Not necessarily just for my department. It just so happened that, you know, the conversation turned to this uh role um and it has come together and she's kind of, is like the shining candidate at the moment for taking over. But I think that it's just, it's nice to understand that there was, there was more to it than what most people know. So, that's all.
Thank you, sir. Counsel Lazo.
I think one of the things that we as counselors have to keep in the forefront, we're building groups of teams in departments. And um if you want to put Hannah up on a, a discussion as far as call, try to do the job, she checks all the boxes. When it comes to being like a tough secondary command who, on a temporary basis, you're saying, you know, I don't see a problem. The reason why I'm gonna be supporting her, not only because of who she is, it's more important when you build a team, the number one person down at DPW is Rich Brenoid. And if Rich Brenoid tells me, this is my number two on the side of me, get the job done, I'm gonna hold him accountable. I don't run his secretaries or his people. But when I come down on him, I want to at least give him the tools to do the job. This is what we've been doing so far in the last six months and it seems like it's working. People are staying, they're solid. We got a manager, DPW director, look at what's been happening. We're building rock-solid teams. So we have to do that at DPW. I want to get Rich, not only the, the excavator and the loader, but the person that he wants for that position. And uh I think we have to do that in all our departments to respect our department heads in building those teams. This is very important to me that he gets that position to do the job he needs to get done.
So I, I appreciate the kind words and the, the thing. Did you just say you give him an excavator?
No.
Uh Counsel Shanier.
I, I feel the same as Counsel Lazo. Uh the things I look at, Hannah's, uh Hannah left on good terms. And people come and go and jobs, she left on good terms. Had she left here on a bad term, where she'd been fired or something like that, I wouldn't have been able to support her. But she left on her terms and she left her employment respectfully. Uh again, for me, uh I want to depend on, on Rich, build his team. As I told the town manager when he came in here, when it came to replace Hannah's position, hire who he wants because he works for council and the department heads work for the manager. And they're answerable to him and he's answerable to us. Um how come it didn't work or can we make it work better? So I'm gonna support Rich and his, his people. I don't sit down and do the interviews. I get a job application and I, I don't think it's fair for me to base my feelings of unemployment on the job application. I put my trust into the department heads and the town manager. Uh so that's why I'm gonna support this fully.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel again.
Uh thank you, Mr. Chair, for you. Um as the previous chair of the council, I worked very closely with uh Ms. Prescott. And uh I can't say enough about her and uh what her capabilities are. But we also had occasion to talk and I found that uh she was very dedicated to the town, very concerned about the town and wanted what's best for the town. However, um she had some issues that she needed uh to take some time with. And sometimes you need to step away so that you have time to give good thought to what it is that you're working on, what you're resolving, what you're trying to resolve. Um she never, she never said to me that she intended for anything to be permanent. Um but she needed time. She just needed some time to be away and to uh get herself together. And I think now that she's seen an opening here, now that she's uh spoken with the manager and with the DPW director, um I think she's got a chance to uh come back and give back to the town again in the way that she wants to, the way that she's capable of doing. Um she's, you know, in terms of being a taskmaster, she uh, she's top-notch. She'll keep things going. She'll keep things straight. She'll be a great right-hand person to uh the director. And I fully support this this um appointment. I, I can't say enough about it. I'm really very excited for Hannah. Um and I'm sure that she'll do a bang-up job for the DPW. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All is a favor? Posed? Four zero. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Very well. All is a favor?